Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to our regular council meeting for March 20, 2025. At this time, I will ask Councilman White to give us the invitation.
Sure. I have to thank you for allowing us to be together at this time. Ask that you would just guide us in this session of this county council meeting. Yes, that you can just give us knowledge, wisdom, and understanding as we make decisions that benefit all citizens of this county. These are all other blessings we ask from the person in Jesus Christ's name for sake. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman White. Next, we have the Declaration of Coram. We do have a coram here. We'll move on to approval of the agenda.
Come on.
Moving properly second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Pose is by the same side. Aye, seven. Out of five approval of minutes, and this is our regular meeting, actually, which was three days earlier, on February 17, 2025. Got a motion?
So.
So moving properly second, all in favor of the approval of our two 17, 20, 25 minutes, let it be known by saying aye. Again, welcome, and we're gonna try to move as quickly as we can. Our first item is our public comment. We have several here tonight. It's got a couple from the historic society. You still want to speak to us?
We have eight of us here.
You got eight? Well, we say welcome, and we feel that you're concerned, we'll be mad. Okay. And Sina Lloyd, okay, Ms. Lloyd?
Good evening, council members and members of the community. My name is Sina Lloyd, and I come to the role of Allendale Hampton in Jasper County Regional Libraries. I'm the new director, and I just came to introduce myself, talk a little bit about my background. So I've come to the library system with over a decade of library leadership and public policy experience. Most recently, I was in public policy in the state of Nevada, and I'm deeply passionate about the role that libraries play in not only educational and lifelong learning opportunities in the community, but also economic development. And my goal here is to ensure that libraries are a welcoming place, that the community feels that it's responsive, that the library is responsive to the needs of the community here in Allendale and in the region. And I just want to also say thank you to Ms. Chanel, and thank you to Mr. Bill Robinson for helping us out with our latest couple of things that happened at the library, and we're up and running, and please come and visit us. We are open nine to five and on Saturdays. So, thank you.
Any questions? I do have one.
Yes.
Do you plan any summer program for the children this year?
We do. So we will start our summer program on June 1st, and it will wrap up July 31st. We will be starting to advertise that here soon, and we'll be happy to come and maybe give a visitor's comments and let you guys know all about the details of those programs coming up. And I know that we did provide also a report through one of our board members to Ms. Jen.
Thanks as well.
All right. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have, let's see. We're out of the fold, it's from the historic society. And James, I think I can make your name out here, you wrote me so fast. Listen, pay me.
To the chairman and to council, good evening. To the citizens of Allendale County and others, good evening also. I'm gonna try to speed this thing up, Bill, it won't be more than three minutes.
Right. You can do it.
I'd like to speak with you all on three things. One is the fee for road and bridges of Allendale County, and the other is fee, what they call land fee of Allendale County. I know the whole council now is almost new, and some things may have fell through the cracks, and I want to bring you all up if you're not already up. The land fee is fifty cents per acre, and that money was earmarked to support fire. Now, rather it being done, I don't know, I heard them crying about the money. The road fee, user fee, is for public works, road and bridge. That road and bridges fee, I went back through the records, and I looked, and it brings in about $185,000 a year. And public works don't have no motor grader, that worth nothing. They don't have no backhoe, that worth nothing. The dump truck worth nothing. Three main items, they need to take care of the road and bridges for folks like me in the country, not in the city. None of it working. Now, it behooves me that we take in 175 to 185,000 dollars a year, and you don't have that equipment. That equipment probably won't cost but about $60,000 a year for about eight or nine years, and you still could have 120 something thousand dollars to do something next to it. So demand's not adding up. I need you all to look into that. The public work guy came to the CTC the other night, and he would like for us to purchase, see if we could purchase some equipment for him. But from, I'm the new chairman, from my standpoint, I'm willing to help, but we are not willing to help if you're not using the money you got properly. If you all can show me where you're using that money properly, then we'll try to help you. We'll try to rent something. We can't buy nothing, but we can try to rent something to help you out, but we can't do it unless we know that you all using that money for what it's supposed to be useful. Okay? Now, the roads that was paved back in 18, 17, 18, those eight or nine streets belong to the county, not the state. I rode those streets in the last couple of days, and it looked like nothing was maintained on those roads since 18. That's the public work stuff that they're supposed to do during the year, and nothing, don't look like nothing been done. Trees cut down side the road, on the road, trash on the road, it is pitiful. We need to make sure that that's kind of stuff, the roads that we do take under our umbrella, that they maintain. And a paved road, it's a whole lot cheaper maintaining it than a dirt road, because you can only have to go by there about once or twice a year. Dirt roads, you may have to go by every month, because of how bad it is. Okay? So we just need to look at that first, if you don't mind. We now, the CTC, I am the chairman of the CTC, we have five members, and we hope that we can do some good in Allendale County. Now, we probably gonna look at rocking some roads. I went in Fairfax last week and looked at three roads with Mr. Young. Now, those three roads should have been blacktop. There's no reason that those four, three to four roads in Fairfax shouldn't have been blacktop. They was on that list when I left in 18, and now he's 25, and he look just like the was when I left in 18. So we need to look at that. If you all help yourself, then CTC will help you too. How about that? That's all.
So I'm like, thank you so much. And I agree with you, James. Several paved roads happen to be in my district, and I kind of in and out through there at least once or twice a week, and kind of, some areas pretty deplorable, you know, so. And hopefully, what we're gonna do is, you know, get with our, get with our CTC members, our public work director, and hopefully, sit down with the members and kind of negotiate a path forward in terms of heavy equipment, whether that's on a lease basis or rental basis, because that certainly need to be done. Okay? Thank you so much. And I didn't mean to call you, I'd say to Ann, but, and...
Yeah, I want to talk about something else.
You want to talk about something else? Okay.
I've got it.
All right.
I do want to thank everybody from the historic board for coming. The cleanup, the spring cleanup, is gonna be April 3rd and 4th, and so I would ask that y'all all make a point to, if nothing else, clean in front of your house and encourage your neighbors to clean, because the roads have gotten pretty bad. Everything's looking pretty trashy, so I would encourage you to clean. I would encourage all of you to volunteer, and we will have bags and vests and everything you need. It will be at the town college, and I hope, and in that act and in all. So, but if you have trouble, give me a call, and we'll make sure you get everything you need, but it's the first weekend in April, so we look forward to having all of you participate. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're down to our visitors, and first on the list is Mr. Malum Creach. Councilman Creach.
Good evening, chairs, good evening, council. I want to recognize everybody here, respected musicians. My council, how you doing?
All right. Today, I come on two things real quick, I want to be real brief. Of course, the Unifeast is approaching, and I want to do it in a respectful way and introduce it back to you guys again as far as asking for your support. It's be right here on Memorial Avenue, and it's a festival to bring joy, to bring unity to Allendale, a time where we can appreciate our town and celebrate it. Kids, teens, adults, and seniors. I ask you guys for your support, and if anything that I would need to do, or anything that you guys need from me to present to you, I'd be more than willing to. I have all the insurance and everything covered. I know last year, me and Mr. Sanders had a, did a waiver, I don't mind doing that. As far as anything else, I think everything kind of, ball is kind of rolling, we're gonna be advertising pretty strong next couple, few days, weeks, and then I just ask for you guys, all of you guys' support in making the Unifeast a success. The second thing I have, I'm with the recreation, of course, recreation department, I help out a lot and volunteer a lot. The school that the kids are using for basketball, the floor, I know that, you know, that's the county, the school, the public school, but if at all the county can maybe work together with public schools to actually, you know, refurbish the floor, because the kids are just kind of sliding, it's kind of hard to practice the basketball, and I think it'll show this good faith as far as them opening up the school for the kids to actually partake in practicing and participating in, you know, basketball program, to help the recreation program out. So just a small thing, I can get some numbers to you guys, some reasonable numbers to you guys, and maybe we can kind of make the initiative to kind of partner up to make that happen so they can practice in a safe and good environment. Those are two things that I have, so if y'all got any questions, I'd be more than willing to answer.
What was that, Fairfax?
Yeah, Fairfax, Fairfax Elementary, yes, sir. And the festival is on May 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, that'll be Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and I'll still be going through all the businesses around just in a little bit, just kind of get them a little courtesy, let them know that the festival is approaching, and again, any, any support in any way, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Got a question for Walter. I know we kind of worked this with Mr. Creach on last year. Have y'all been talking, or you need to see you? We can do the same time.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I can meet with him in time.
Okay.
And get that part squared away.
Like I said, again, I have, I give, you know, courtesy to fly to you guys, personal one, but again, if anything that I need to do, I'd be more than willing to do to make sure I see citizens smile and celebrate our great time.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
See you. Next, we have Mr. Danny Black from Southern Carolina Alliance, and he's gonna be talking to us about all of the good projects.
I'm gonna keep you up to date as to where we are. Before I do that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to introduce Dustin McCully, who's come to work with us. You'll be seeing him, he's learning everything in the region right now, and I know it's a lot to learn, and we appreciate you coming tonight. You will see a lot more of him down in Allendale as well. Secondly, I want to thank Ann, and especially the people that have been keeping the county clean. Allendale County by far, of the seven counties we operate in, by far has done the best job of keeping the roads clean, keeping the litter picked up, et cetera, so y'all have done a tremendous job, and we do appreciate what Allendale has done. This is a main thoroughway, you know, from Aiken down to Hilton Head, and people talk about it all the time, still say, and Bill, I guess you still sit on the board, but the, what's it called, the landfill runs trucks around. If y'all ever follow a truck going to waste management, you can see where most of that trash comes from. Very vivid. So I'm not going to point a finger, but just follow a truck, it's not people throwing beer cans out the window anymore. Social media is driving me nuts, and I think it's the same way for everybody that's older than 18 anymore. We were contacted recently by some citizens that were asking some questions from Allendale County about a particular industry and about some things that have gone home. We face this, quite frankly, in every county in the whole state, there's always someone who wants to find out more information that we can't provide most of the time, usually it's confidential, but I think it's to a point on one area in Allendale County we need to address as best we can, and then tell you what we're trying to do and what the plans are. Several years ago, and I don't remember right now, I think it was just before the pandemic, we, the state of South Carolina sued the Department of Energy, we got some settlement money from that. It was all going to the legislature, every dime was going to the legislature, what was it, you remember, Bill, seven million dollars to, no, I'm sorry.
It was almost 300, 300 million plus, because the attorney got...
Yeah, it's seven million, that's why that sticks in my head. Nice legal work for a day and a half, but Walter, you wish you had that too, I...
I thought it wouldn't be you.
That's right. I see you on Facebook, Walter. We did go through some hard times with that. If you remember, SCA, with the permission of the seven counties we represent, sued the state of South Carolina and the Attorney General at the time to make sure that the money could be considered for things that we were doing in the state and trying to help our regions, since we were affected more than anybody else in this state, because it's the matter Riverside, sitting right beside us, that plutonium that we sued over is right down the road from the Barnwell Gate in particular. And anyway, long story short, we were able to get in front of the legislature and ask for things for all of our member counties and for the state, there were some other things that went on. And if you remember, there was some big numbers floated around for bigger counties like Aiken. And anyway, we did some negotiations with the county chairman at the time, we visited Columbia, did some education, not lobbying, but education, in trying to make sure we got our fair share. And the biggest question we ever had was, what are you gonna do to have a transformal opportunity that you got? Of this case, we had four counties at the time, all tier four counties, which mean that they had the highest unemployment, highest poverty rates, et cetera, et cetera. What can we do with this money, if we give it to y'all, to build up something that will generate growth, activity, jobs, et cetera? And at the time, we submitted a plan, and they took most of it, we got $4 million for Allendale County, and that was to permit, permit due diligence, develop a piece of land that would attract the businesses into the area. We got $4 million for Bamberg County to build a second spec building, the Crossroads Plant. We put in $4 million to Barnwell County, that was all shifted to education for the new high school that we're finally going to see a consolidated high school in Barnwell County. Colleton County got a million, three, Hampton County got three million to purchase land and develop the new park where the greenhouse operation is gonna go after three years. It's finally coming back, and they'll start everything down there at 20th of April, I think is the date they're gonna do the groundbreaking. Of that four million, what we did, we searched all over Allendale County for certain things that we didn't have, like a rail spur or rail connection that we could bring off our industry to come in, also good land, good solid land that need, didn't need a whole lot of work, and had potential to grow. We found a two, well, we found two sites, but one in particular, a 200 acre site down near Fairfax, as you know, that was perfect for what we were trying to do. Other than water sewer, we still gotta get water sewer there, but we found a good piece of land, we purchased that piece of land, SCA did, with the monies that we got from the state. We bought the land, and it wasn't just a few months later, Tintan came third. Tintan was an RFP at the time, meaning that the state gets all of these inquiries coming in for companies, and they pass it out to the county or regional agencies, and they ask the regional agencies to respond with sites. We responded with four sites out of seven for Tintan. Those sites went into the state, Tintan sent site consultants in, they basically looked at everything, plus Georgia, plus Tennessee, plus North Carolina. They marked off every site to one per state. Our site made it through. Then they went back and reevaluated and set up basically two sites that they would compete, the state against state. Our site made it again for South Carolina, and then we competed with an adjoining state. We submitted, as a state, submitted incentives, plans, how we're gonna help them, et cetera, and over a short period of time, to be quite honest, I was surprised at the speed of them, they selected us, and they wanted to come to Allendale County. We eventually gave the land to them, that as an incentive. We bought it with state money, here it is, we'll give you 100 acres now, at some later date, when you expand, we can expand to the other 100 acres, and that's what they wanted, was 200 acres they could build on. We started the process, as you know, we had a grand opening down here, the governor came, et cetera, and we made the announcement they were coming. Well, they were working on their financing, and that became a huge issue that the Vietnamese government, and I think I've said this to some of you very quietly and privately, because this was all confidential information, most of their funding would have come out of Vietnam. Well, they found out that they couldn't shift the money that was invested in Vietnam, there's a lot of story behind this, but the money that Vietnam companies, or banks was gonna put in this project in the U.S., they defaulted. They said, we can't do this, the government says we can't do this, so they had to go look for new investors. That was '23. All through '24, we held the land for them in their name, we transferred the land to their name, and we went through the process again of them getting funded, they've been all over the world trying to get the funding. When the end, about the middle of '24, we said, you know, if you can't pull this off soon, we're gonna have to take this land back, and we need to look for another project. About September, I think it was, we get a letter from a different funding source, and that funding source was in Malaysia, who said, we gonna give them the amount of money they need to build this plant. It's wonderful, that's great. We rocked along, we had the state involved, the state actually handled most of this. At the, I guess it was about November 1st, we said, you're not making as much progress as you said you were gonna make, so your option is gonna end in '24, December 31st and '24. We're not gonna extend it any further than that unless you show us financially you're able to pull this off. When December came, we got these letters, Vietnamese and then English versions, but basically saying, we're still coming, it's gonna take us a little more, a little while longer. Well, we told them we would do away with the option, put the land back on the market, because we had some other people that were looking at it, if this fell through. That option was terminated, we filed all the legal stuff that we had to file in the U.S. and in Vietnam, we had to go out and hire Vietnamese company to represent us, SCA and the state, and we wound up basically saying, the option's over unless you can come back to us. And we wound up basically saying, the option's over unless you can come back to us, we're going to end this program with you. Now, if you come back, because they still think they can come back, it's a new project. We'll start the whole negotiation over. If the land is still available, we'll use that piece of land for your construction. If it's not, we'll find another piece of land with Allendale County and we have backups, obviously, to that piece of land. That's the way it stands today. They still, somebody owes us about a quarter million dollars is what we spent. We did that on due diligence. We did that on a lot of stuff, but it wound up being about $220,000 and we asked them to pay us back a quarter of a million to cover everybody's expense. They offered $50,000 about 45 days ago and they wanted us to put the option back on the land and hold it for them. We have refused because I don't think they're any further along and neither does the state as far as having their $68 million secured as was announced. That's us. That's where we stand. That's what happened in that situation. And all the speculation, all the rumors, everything else that goes out on Facebook is untrue. We filed three weeks ago to have that land put back in our name. We did all the legal work to do that and had to notify them in Vietnam that we were doing it and the court. That land should be back in our name. If it's not already, I might ask you to check tomorrow and see. But if it's not back in our name, it will be very shortly in SCA's ownership. That's not good, but that's the story. And it was not us, as I've been accused of going out, buying a piece of land, making a big profit and sticking it in my pocket on the property and also that we were not truthful in how Tintan came here. I get the blame and Bill remembers this. We had enemies in economic development all along and competition. Most of my enemies have died off now. There's only a couple left and they both know how to get on Facebook. So when that does come up, we do not answer. We don't want to get into controversial conversations, et cetera, on media because it's all rumor and speculation anyway. But that's the story. I wanted to make sure you knew that. The good news is we had three other projects that are extremely interested. Two council members, and I thank both of you for coming the other day. Bill's down drinking and playing golf somewhere so he wouldn't come, but you are very well represented and I appreciate the two gentlemen for coming down, Mr. Conley, Mr. White. You met a company that we may have a LOI, a letter of intent within the next few days. They know we still have this controversy and that we may be sued, could be sued, I guess, if we sell it to somebody else or give it to somebody else for a project, but we're willing to take that chance. It is a piece of land. It is paid for by state taxpayer money, but it's owned by SCA and it has a specific purpose. Now, what I need from Allendale, to carry this along and make it more attractive, need water and sewer too. We got to put that in. We're going to have to put a rail spur in for the company, companies that are looking at it right now all require rail. So we made a good decision by finding a piece of land with rail access. That rail would be paid for by somebody, hopefully not us, if it does come about, whoever may come in the future. But that's what happened with Tintan. It's still on the books as a legitimate project with the state. If they do raise their money and prove they have the money financially secured, they can come back with a new project. They can look at anywhere else in the state they want to, but the goal would be still to bring them down here if they're able to raise their cash. Mr. Chairman, I stand open to any discussions. And I do want to thank there was a young lady that obviously, and I got, somebody sent me a snapshot of the conversation that supported SCA's position and the county's position. I thought she did a very good job answering some of the questions that came from another neighboring county, but she did a good job in answering those. We will never answer that. We do not get on, except for good news, we do not get on social media at all at this point.
Great question. I think you explained it quite well. I'm just concerned about that other piece of property on the left side of that track.
I want that too. And you know how this works. So Bill, you did it for 20 years and I appreciate, I want you to come back, but you play too much golf now, I guess, did you? There are, y'all know we're a small state. There aren't many pieces of property that meet all the criteria that's available. We're looking for big tracks now because we only have two tracks. In South Carolina, there are only two, they call them mega sites, but mega sites that are available for big projects. We're trying to put one in Colleton on a piece of land right now. We're trying to, if you remember down in Hampton, we have that large track that we've got the food processors on and hopefully a new power plant's going to go there too to give us more generation. We have, still have 400 and something acres in the Barnwell Scat Park and we have Jasper County that's got 1,500 acres and we're trying to get an additional piece of land for logistics. And I can tell you now, everything in Jasper, if they're not putting a house on it, we're going to be putting warehouses on it because that serves Savannah Port and that's basically that's all that's coming down there. We made this announcement the other night. That company with 462 jobs is going into a lease building, which to me is kind of crazy, but that's where they wanted to go and that was great. We're going to have a lot more of those in that part of the country.
Danny, we appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
The next item is propel business of that. And that's Mr. Adrian Crawford. Is Mr. Crawford here? Okay. We move on. We have Colonial Life representative, Mr. Peter Manten. Welcome, sir.
Thank you all. Thank you for allowing me to come. I represent Colonial Life and the county and thank you all for listening to me, but the, Allendale County has Colonial Life in the county. You have employees that have Colonial Life, but you have no representation with Colonial Life. So we can't talk to your people to help them with monies we may owe them. Also, you have sheriff, deputy sheriff's companies from different counties, Hampton County to other counties that have Colonial Life and so they can't get it transferred as a payroll deduction because there's no representative here in Allendale County to help with that. And so I'm here to see about how becoming your representative to ensure that your people are represented by Colonial Life and they get the best benefits. And Colonial Life is a South Carolina company. It started in 1939 in Columbia, South Carolina by three women who determined their houses needed short-term disability. And so it came about. And all the other short-term disabilities are companies like Aflac, Allstate, the others are copied Colonial Life. We just advertise, we don't have a duck, but we do have service. We do give great service and our home office is right here in Columbia. So I was just, so when I found out that different employees from different counties were coming here and they couldn't get their benefits transferred to payroll deduction here, it's when I learned that you don't have representation. And so, do you have any questions?
Any question, counsel?
Sure.
I was asking counsel if they had any questions for you. I imagine the only question I would have was, being the company rep, you're going to be here on a monthly basis, weekly basis?
I can be here monthly or whenever needed. We should have an open enrollment sometime to, because employees don't know their benefits. They have benefits that can help them. We have guaranteed issue life insurance for all employees and we have guaranteed issue short-term disability and all the policies are very affordable and pay very well. And most people that get a Colonial Life policy keep them even when they retire because of the benefits keep on doing. The only thing that stops is short-term disability stops at age 70. Other than that, they're very good, they transfer, no permanent change and, but that's why I'm here.
Okay, well, we certainly appreciate you being here and I'm sure the employees will be giving you a call and we welcome you to come when need be. And we can provide the...
Chanel knows your name.
Great. Well, she can provide you the ministry needs you may...
Yes, sir.
...may have when you come. So, but thanks again.
Well, thank you. Have a great day.
Appreciate you.
We're down to counsel report and we have our vice chair, Mr. Chaney.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I ain't be before you long. I attended a couple of my committee meetings that I'm over. The first one was the Office of Aging. Their meeting was held on March 3rd at the Leisure Center. And they had a roof put on and the director of Office of Aging is Mr. DeWong Smith and he gave us the total of what the roof cost was $2,404.44. And he's asking for the Park and Recreation Department to pay half of that. And also due to federal cuts that come in now, some of the services from the Office of Aging would be cut back because they don't not be getting the same amount of federal money that they were receiving. So would be lesser service going on at the Office of Aging. And it was also brought to our attention that there's no responsible person that's over the Office of Aging, from the Office of Aging Director nor the Recreation Director. So Mr. Counsel, I'll make a motion that Mr. DeWong Smith for the Director of the Office of Aging be responsible party over the Leisure Center.
That's a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Moving properly, second. The motion being that Mr. Smith will become the custodian of the Leisure Center. Any question? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Also, make it be known...
I'm going to be...
I'm sorry.
That was a pose, say no? Aye, sir.
Sorry about that, Mr. Chair.
That's okay.
Also, make it be known that the Recreation Department be responsible paying the Office of Aging half of that bill, which is $1,202.22.
Mark some of the creation.
Right. Recreation be responsible for that, for that amount.
And during that bill based on information received from Mr. Smith, this is in relationship to the roof work?
Yes, sir.
The...
The cost of the roof was $24,000.
Yes.
Right.
Okay. And the county's part was 2,000.
$2,404.44.
So he's asking that half of it comes out of the Recreation Department budget.
Correct.
Okay. All right. That's a motion. We got a second?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Poses? Aye, sir.
Also, Constable, Constable Woman Jenny is also at that meeting with me. Me and her also attended the County Transportation Committee meeting on March the 4th at the Administration Office. I'm not going to cover everything that went on, I'll let Constable Woman Jenny just cover some. I'm only going to cover two of the things is, first, they had a lesson that night and Mr. Pintney alluded, he was elected the chairman over that committee. And also, there was also a new member resided to the committee, which is Mr. Robert Bruce Lastly, I have, as far as our IT person, we all know Mr. Donnie Hutto does all our IT work. So Mr. Chairman, I would like to make the motion that Mr. Donnie Hutto be our director over the IT department and anything that pertained to IT has to come through him.
And what's Mr. Hutto's status right now? Is he not the IT?
He's there.
He's just the IT person.
Okay. So you're asking now that he'd become Director of IT?
Correct.
Okay. That's a motion?
Yes, sir.
Get a second.
So let me ask a question. Would the motion be that his title changed?
Yes. Yeah, his title changed. Anything pertaining to IT has to come through him first.
Okay. We heard the motion. We got a second? Any question?
Second. A second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Poses by the same side? Aye, sir. That's it, Mr. Chair. All right. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair Chaney. Mr. Conley.
Yes, sir. I'll be very brief. Mr. Chaney and I both serve on the Public Service Committee. We've met with the sheriff a couple of times and his people this week with concerns over overtime for covering the town of Allendale. We did meet, have two productive meetings with the town. We had one meeting with the mayor and then the second meeting, we had Ms. Fitz and Ms. Hattie Jackson was present. And I thank you all both for being there. I think, I think it was a very good meeting. I know they've met and I think they're going to be in discussion on how we can maybe have some contractual agreements between the county and the town in far as providing police coverage while they're going through their issues with not having a chief and their officer count getting kind of down. So that was a very productive meeting. We'll thank everybody for being involved. While we're there, the sheriff's report, he had 128 total calls for service the past month. Total city calls responded to 206 at 137 traffic stops, 186 tickets issued, 16 arrests, 22 animal shelter calls, 20 dogs captured, 18 dogs sent to rescue, 2 dogs adopted and he's gotten 3,200 pounds of dog food donated. And there's 20 dogs at the shelter as of this date. Thank the sheriff for all your hard work. And next, I've got a report from the fire service from Chief Stanley. He wants to let everybody know that we do have all of his equipment. I know he's had trouble with fire engines being out of service for a lot of times I've been on council, so that is starting to be taken care of. And we have purchased one of the 3,000 gallon pumper tankers. It is in the county and it's paid for. The second pumper tanker will be here hopefully by the end of the year. They applied and was granted a V-safe grant from the state, an amount of $14,000 and some And they had 25 calls in the month of February. And also the Public Service Committee, the sheriff had an accident, one of his officers in an accident totaled a vehicle and it's the recommendation of the Public Service Committee to allow the sheriff to replace that vehicle with consolidation funds and then the money from insurance suddenly go back into that account. And that's the recommendation of the committee. That's all I have, sir.
All right. Let's put that recommendation into motion if you don't mind.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we allow the sheriff to purchase a replacement vehicle with consolidation money and then the insurance funds will be redeposited into that account.
Moving properly, second. Any question? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Poses by the same side. Thank you, Ms. Conley. Now we're down to Ms. Jennings and we will...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
I forgot to mention something.
Yeah.
I apologize, Ms. Jennings. Chief Stanley also reported that he put out bids for the St. Mark Fire Station and all three of the general contractors have requested a geological survey. So he has now sent out a request for geological service, for a survey. He should have that within a month and he expects to have that back to the GCS and hopefully within two months have some sample numbers on construction costs for that project. Just moving along nicely. That's all.
Ms. Conley, just one question. The last conversation and meeting we had with Chief Stanley, we had asked for an equipment and I haven't talked, did he mention anything?
I did not.
Okay.
We'll follow up on that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Ms. Jennings.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. On June 22nd, 2003, Sergeant OJ Smith died during a small armed ambush in Baghdad. OJ Smith was a 1999 graduate. O.J. Smith was a 1999 graduate of Allenair Fairfax High School. He enlisted in the US Army so he would be able to attend college. He left for boot camp 14 days after graduation. He signed up for two years, and once he was completed, he signed up six more years. On January, January 2nd, O.J. went to Germany for four years. And he was given a position as a truck driver with Army 123rd Main Support Battalion. He impressed his superior so much that he was encouraged to train for sergeant. He did, completed the course, took the sergeant exam. He graduated ninth out of 127 with a GPA of 94.56. On May 6th, 2003, O.J. left Germany for Kuwait. On Sunday, June 22nd, 2003, he received confirmation that he had been promoted to sergeant. A few hours later, he was killed in a convoy and, and was attacked in Baghdad. The citizens of Martin have a request to this council that because O.J. was from the Martin Mallett community, that the street, Moody, Moody Street, Moody Lane? Moody Lane?
Moody Road.
Moody Road, where he grew up, be renamed to O.J. Simpson Road. Because of O.J.'s involvement in that battle, Germany flew his family to Germany to, for a ceremony to name a room in his honor. And they were flown, I have some information about that for council and about the ceremonies also in Germany. So at this time, council, I'm requesting, I'm making a motion that the street where O.J. Simpson, O.J. Simpson, sorry. I apologize. O.J...
Orenthe O.J. Smith.
Smith.
Orenthe Smith, excuse me. Orenthe Smith grew up in Martin on Moody Road. That that road be changed to Orenthe Smith Road. So I have a motion for you, madam.
Second.
Mr. Chair?
You've heard the motion from Ms. Jennings that we name, rename Moody Road to O.J. Smith Road? That's the, that's the motion, or that's the request?
Yes.
Okay, and do I have a second on that?
Second.
So moving properly second. All in favor of the same motion, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Poses by the same sign? And from this day forward, Moody Road now becomes O.J. Smith Road.
Uh, Mr. Chair, is there a search procedure?
I was gonna ask Walter to make certain that we do everything right to officially do that.
Right. I would think we probably need to do a resolution also. I'll get the information.
Okay.
Okay, now, I also need to mention that Mr. Roosevelt Gould is here, and he is heading that. Mr. Gould?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Well, it seemed like Germany took the initiative and they named a road or boulevard after them?
They named a, a road.
They named a building after them.
Oh, they named a building after them.
And Germany flew his family there for that ceremony.
Okay.
And I think that Orenthe was the, in his battalion, he was the only person that died in that battalion.
In the convoy?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you so very much for that.
Um, also, I have some additional information from Ms. Abigail Ashley concerning the library. And she wanted to thank the Allenair County Council and county administration for their support for the problems they were having with their electricity in the last few days. And so she also has some upcoming programs that the library will be sponsoring this month and next month. Create Your Own Comment, I believe that was today. On March the 25th is the Garden Club. On April 2nd is Reed Rattle and Row. On April the 8th is the Mentor 101. And several other activities that will be, take place at the library for the next couple of months. And this is coming from Ms. Abigail Ashley. And I made some copies for you so that you can read, and if you would like to attend some of these activities or encourage the community to attend as well. So would you pass us out, please? Also, as Mr. Chaney mentioned earlier, we attended the CTC meeting on March the 4th, and I have some information for council for the month of March. The county received $73,442. And right now, we have a little over $606,000 available to do work on our roads. I believe that in, if I'm reading this correctly, in October of '24, the county received $90,000 for, it says, hey, it said rocks? The rocks to fix the roads, rocky, rocky, what is that?
Crush and run.
Crush and run.
Oh, they said what is Crush and Run?
Yes.
But anyway, that money is still sitting there for the Crush and Run. But also, the county also received $95,000 to install street signs. And that's been ever since October '24. That money is still sitting there. And based on the information that was presented at the meeting of all Allenair County, the town of Allenale looks terrible as far as street signs. Street signs are down, you can't read them, the signs is up. And so, right now, it's $95,000 now. Mr. Paintly, I thought it was mentioned at the meeting that Mr. Arnold is responsible for that? Or is it CTC?
You have your question?
The street signs.
The street signs, uh, they printed before I left council.
And it's, should be the same way.
That's a public work issue.
That's...
Public work supposed to take care.
Is that for the entire county?
That's entirely, for the entire county.
Okay, but right now, it's $95,000 there because there are many streets that do not have any signs. And, you know, when you have emergency wagons coming through, they don't know the names of the streets because there are no signs. So I think that is something that needs to be done immediately in getting those signs done. It's a copy of that as well.
And I'd like to just inject the fact that I've sent word to the town officials about the condition of the street signs. And I hope it's gotten back to, to council. The street signs, I don't, I don't see how you can ride. And I was mainly talking about public service, public service people ride the roads every day. And of course, I also ride the roads every day in my district. And the number of street signs that's down, bit, or missing, I did say to one of the employees, please report that to your manager in terms of the number of signs that, that's down. And Ms. Jennings, she's correct. With the emergency vehicles coming in this town and delivery personnel coming in, and if you don't have the proper street signs, it's pretty hard to even find your location. And I, I just hope the town will, at least allow their personnel to take a look at it. I will be happy to take somebody and show them, you know, what I see on a daily basis. And in the past, we made the street signs, and we would also install them. And same thing for Fairfax. If we don't know what street signs are missing, then the, the public works cannot do their job. So it's not only Allenale, it's not my district per se, but it's all over town. I was in Fairfax yesterday, there's some signs missing there. So I think we can do a better job, so we can take that $95,000 and really do some, do some good work. I'm sorry, Ms. Jennings.
Go ahead. And I also have Mr. Dana Black mentioned something about the tonnage in Allenale County. And I have some information about that. And I attended a meeting with Constable Robinson with Three Rivers, and I'm giving you a copy of this. And Allenair County has, I think it has been allowed 2,000 tons a year of trash. And if you note here, that it's at the minimum required tonnage for Allenair County, per the service agreement is 2,000 tons. And so Allenair County is actually below 2,000 at, at this point. So I'm giving you the information that was provided by Three Rivers concerning Allenair County. And also, one more thing. The lower council of government is having Youth Resource Day in Allenair County on April 30th at the National Guard Armory. And I have some flyers from you concerning this is, this is coming from, this is coming from your daughter, Mr. Gould?
Yes.
It's from?
Uh, T U Gould. T U?
T U Gould, all right, T U Gould.
Alabama T U.
Okay, uh, the lower council of government is having an event at the National Guard Armory on the 30th. So everyone's invited to attend the Youth Resource Day. And there are some flyers, I have some flyers if anyone would like to have one. Also, Mr. Chair, I have a question, a concern about a service that we're supposed to have called Spring Brook. Now, I was told that, well, last year, we were told that Spring Brook would be up and running by July of 2024, June or July. On the tax side so far this year, we paid over $54,000 for this program. And on the administration side, I guess over $50,000. But the problem is, we don't have the program. But we're paying the money.
Okay. Good question. We got, we're paying the money. And I think Chanel has brought this to us more than once. On the condition or the level that we're progressing and getting out of brackets into the Spring Brook system. Naturally, taxes is something that we, we do. We have not gotten the accountable side, the account side, fully developed. And Chanel, would you want to take a minute just to update us on that?
Yes, so, Ms. Jennings, I have the same concerns that you do, to the point where this year, when they offered...
Can you start a little louder, please?
Sure. I have the same concerns that you have. To the point where when they asked me to sign the new contract, I was not willing to sign. Now, I did sign so that the auditor could have her forms, and we could pay for the things that we're using. But my concern is that before I signed the Spring Brook part, because there's two parts published, and Spring Brook, my concern is I want to make sure that this time, there won't be any hiccups. The last time when we were doing this, you know, there were all kinds of things that happened, delays. A few days before the implementation, they had, they cut, they cut things off. I didn't get to finish. Part of the difficulty we had with them was the reps that they had with us. I was just speaking about this earlier today in training. What they had was the implementation specialists, and I say quote-unquote specialist, they're IT people, not finance people. Part of the delay was I was trying to get the person up to speed to where I was because, yes, they're IT, but they don't speak finance. I spent more time and weeks going back and forth and having to repeat myself, send things, have phone calls for over weekends, do things because the reps did not understand or comprehend what I needed. For this, for this very reason, and the, the coding and mapping that I had to do with this system, most people cannot do that. So therefore, they go with another software system. And they, it takes 18 months, but they import all this data. They, it's done for them instead of all the manual work that, that I've had to do. Now with the, I'm going to be speaking with Perry, and I want to get, I want to make sure that this time, we don't have any problems. We are back on the schedule to go live in July. I want to make sure that we are able to go through and this be completed without any problems, without any more surprises. The last person that we spoke to, Debbie, she is going to be on the project. That's who we needed the first time. And I just want that reassurance. Because I have concerns, the way their bill is, it's front-loaded. You pay everything, whether you're using it or not, upfront. So you have to pay before you can even get started. Personally, if I had to choose a system, I would choose another system. I would probably choose Edmunds Gun Tech. But I would say this, I want to get it up and running. Because before we make any decisions to do anything else, we're probably stuck for at least two years. But we need something that's gonna function kind of wide. I want a guarantee from them before I start on the dotted line.
So we'll be paying them a year before we start?
Well, it's front-loaded, so when we, when the contract was signed, initially, it was signed in February of, I think it was '22. It's all the fees start, the cloud space. And I want to negotiate because here we are again, another year, and we don't have it. So that's another reason why I haven't signed it.
Well, we are paying them.
We are paying them. But we haven't paid this, the new part of the contract yet. And that's what I want to negotiate. We paid for what we're using, and now the Sprinter part, that's where my concern is, and that's what I want to try to negotiate with them. But we do have an implementation date, and that is July.
And do we have a backup date just in case they flutter again?
No, we do not. The big thing that was keeping us from, from going live, besides concerns with dealing with a difficult person with their company, what was required, we were told it was optional. We were told we didn't have to do that. Once I was told we had to do it, it's done. Now, we're just getting back on the schedule because they're booked out so far in advance.
Okay. All right, Ms. Jennings?
Well, finally, Mr. Chair, I would like to make an apology to Orenthe Smith's family, to this council and the community for calling him the wrong name. He did not deserve that. And I have sincerely apologized to the family of Orenthe Smith and to the community of Martin Mallett and to the community for calling Orenthe Smith the wrong name.
Okay.
Okay.
We hope the family accept that. Thank you so much for acknowledging the fact that you made a mistake. Mr. White?
This chair and the council, I will also be brief. I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention that there has been permitting activity, permitting activity in the county. I requested from the Administration Office that updates be given regarding permits and also revenues that have come from our permits. I do have a figure from September 2024 until the first week of March. The county has received $35,024.5 from our permits that have been issued for houses and also businesses. I also wanted to ensure, I think the council, you know, we discussed that we want to ensure that we're providing the best possible service to those who are building in our county. And we had a meeting on Tuesday, Ms. Conley and myself and the Business Services Committee, where we were discussing to make recommendations to council. We received two proposals from two companies to do our inspections and possible other services. And, you know, that information has been provided to council, those proposals. And, you know, we'll probably discuss those in executive session. I just wanted to make that known. And also to the community, Allenair County Planning and Zoning Commission, we'll be meeting on April 7th at 6 o'clock P.M. at six o'clock P M. For those who will listen to it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. White. I will be brief on my report. There's a couple of things that just want to keep you informed. Number one, we meet on the twenty-eighth of March, and that's the Lower Savannah Council Government. We have a retreat. We're going to be talking about moving forward and a lot of possible backs and services. And what we do a lot here in this county is Office of Agent. They're probably the bigger, the biggest user of services from Lower Savannah than any other service outlet. So we will have a retreat on the twenty-eighth in North Augusta. And hopefully, we may learn additional information. In terms of any service cap, we're hoping that we will be spare, special when it comes to the agent side of the house. And, but until it happens, we're moving forward. We did decide last month to, to financially support the Office of Agent meal service through July, through June thirtieth. And hopefully, come July first, we'll see what the counties can do to continue some of their services. Yes, I do believe there will be some service cap. I just cannot, at this point, say exactly how much it's going to hurt the county or hurt our region. But there will maybe be, be some cuts. The same thing with workforce. And Danny, I know that's a big thing for us. And training our workforce, you know, that too is pretty much on the chopping block in terms of how much, we don't know. So those are some of the things you need to keep an eye on. Also, we appreciate the library folks. They did send us a nice postcard saying thank you for the county intervening and doing some, doing some things to, to help down. And lastly, I met with the, our Historical Society group last week. Good group of people. I think it was eight or ten in attendance. They all were very adamant that the county needs to move forward. And I didn't disagree. It's been on our plate for over two years. And I think Mrs. Price kind of said that the last time she was here. I think she got through to some people, so. And that's a good thing. And I think the whole, the whole organization got through to council. And at this time, we were recommended, we did check back with USDA. We still have about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of grant money available. I was surprised that they were still sitting, sitting there waiting for us. And I will propose that we spend up to fifty thousand dollars in matching those grants to go ahead and move forward in the renovation of the Allenelle County Historical Society facility.
That's a motion?
That's a motion.
Mr. Chairman, for, for record, I would have to recuse myself from that because I'm an officer in the-
Well, for, for the record, Mr. White, he's going to recuse himself. And we accept that recu- recusal.
Go with the motion again.
Motion that will fund the renovation and restoration of the Allenelle County Historical Society facility at a rate of no more than fifty thousand dollars.
There was motion made?
Second. You don't start making a motion, I'm failed, okay?
Go ahead. Walter said I can make the motion. Go ahead.
You told me I couldn't. So you better get it right.
Can he make it?
He can.
Yeah, he can. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Give his second.
It's not customary, but there's nothing-
Nothing to say, yeah, yeah.
Well, let somebody make the motion.
He's kind of did that to me because he was being mean to- Okay, we're moving properly second that we will donate up to, spend up to fifty thousand dollars for the renovation and restoration of the Historical Society Facility. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Poses? Aye, sir. Thank you so much. Now we have our interim administrative report. And I know it's going to be brief.
First, I'd like to give you an update on the daycare center situation. I spoke to the director of the daycare. She said she was going to the town to see what her requirements were. I said that you weren't, you were interested in finding out what could be put there, you would want a drawing, but you, you wanted to make sure that it met the town's guidelines of what zoning, it met the zoning requirement. So she said she was going to the town, seeing what it was zoned for. And then whatever was within that zone, she's going to bring an actual drawing to you. So now we're just waiting on her, but she's provided information. I went there in person. We had a department meeting last week. At the department meeting, I distributed the budget documents. And along with the budget documents, you asked earlier about equipment. I provided each of the departments with an equipment listing, so a capital asset listing for their departments that I'm going to give them more time to do that because it's detailed. And I want to make sure that I will give them an end date, but to have a listing of all of our equipment that's in their departments and, and also inventory assets. I want to make sure that we have a listing of everything and the location, and also that we're not repeatedly buying the same things over and over again this year. That's a part of their packet. And along with their justification and forms, I wanted to make sure that they understood that anything they provide you with, and they're justifying or make requests, that you need the documentation, the backup for. And I said, anything that was provided to me, they're going to meet with me, will be given to council so they understand that it's supposed to come to you. If departments could not make it, they weren't in attendance, I made sure I sent a packet with the documentation to the department. A copy of what I sent them, not only the agenda, but the packet is in your packet so you see exactly what they have for the budget documents. I also sort, met with the finance committee and whatever that and the requirements. And I'm going to be getting with them again about audit documents preparation. So the budget documents have to be back into me on March thirty-first along with the other, other documents that have to be presented to the finance committee on the thirty-first. And I'll give more details about that. I will say that our tracking of credit cards and spending has gone down. And now that matching up everything to assign it with expenses primarily to the department is happening. Also, there was a question about fire departments and the fire and rescue fee. I will say, as a part of the budget process, what we did was we separated the fire department. So that fire rescue fee is a part of the fire department for two reasons. By separating it, this allows them to be able to buy equipment, more like a fire truck or some major needs. And that's a dedicated funding service source so they can do that without going against our eight percent legal debt limit from the state. Also, this is how we're able to do that maintenance. That truck that Matt was talking about, they actually had it towed away. But the good part about it is the maintenance that's required for it, I think it's going to be between thirty, fifty thousand. We have the funds. It is happening, that's an additional truck. So once that one goes, gets back up, the next truck is going to go out. So the plan is to have three done this time and then also the other work trucks. So sir, the money is going to maintenance. It is happening and in progress this year. I'm actually excited about it because they're getting what they need. Public safety is a huge, huge thing for me. And I want to just make sure you knew that is going where it's supposed to. And on top of that, I would want to make a comment about what Sheriff Freeman reported about the animal shelter. Earlier, last week, one of the vendors came, and he was talking about the cleaning products. He raved about how well the shelter was operating with the staff, how good the staff were, how well he thought things were going. And this is an outside person, so I just wanted to say that whatever is happening at the shelter is good. And that was a report from someone who is outside, who just came in about the products. And what he's doing is he brought in products that they're going to be able to do the things they need to do and keep it even cleaner and healthier so more animals can get adopted. Now with this food donation that was received, they only had to buy food one time in this whole year. So they are doing some really good stuff. And I just want to make sure that the public is aware, that people are seeing what they're doing, and animals are getting adopted. Anytime animals get adopted, at least this food came from up, up north. So when animals go up north to be adopted, they send hundreds of pounds of food. And that's why we got the thirty-two hundred pounds of food. Another thing that's, that April's been doing, which has been great, we know things are hard. Inflation is really, really hitting all of us. Now, with these food donations, what's happened, if people want to surrender their dog because they can't take care of them, they've been able to donate food to make sure that the pets can stay at home. So that is the last thing I wanted to say. You will get your financial report. I was, I'm going to try to have it by tomorrow, if not, then it's going to be one day. But I just wanted to say that it's looking up at the animal shelter. But also, I'm excited about that we're making progress on getting things done that needs to be done for the public.
Ms. Lewis, I was going to ask you about that. And you mentioned that, you know, I, I have a request for each one of our meetings. Could we get a finance report? It would be helpful if I could see it before the meeting. So you will have time to look over it. But I'm requesting that the council receive a finance report at all of our meetings, you know. And I appreciate you giving it us till tomorrow. But if we could get it prior to, to the meetings, if we have any questions, that we could ask you.
Absolutely. I, I planned on giving it. There was something didn't go as planned initially. But yes, that is not a problem going forward.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Chanel. And I'm sure you sent an email I sent out about, about paying the bills. And I will say to you, based on council input, we would like, and we shall be at the table in recognizing and identifying outstanding bills. We don't want to wholesale payment of bills like we did before. So you mentioned in November that you counted down to the bottom of the bowels of outstanding bills. So, you know, we're going to prioritize what would be smacked. And just want you to keep that in mind. The vice chair and myself will be sitting on top of you and your county people. We need to know. And just want to let you know that on a personal note. That's not, not me, that's, that's council. And thank you. Walter?
Yeah, just two short things. The county that contacted again about closing a part of, a portion of Broken Road and Stillwood Road in Allenelle County, which is some roads near the Hampton County line. And previously, there was a request, and what they're asking for is approval, you know, from the county before they file an action. Previously, it had been submitted to the county, and the county had agreed to close them on the condition that if there was any opposition, they would not agree to it. Well, the people who were opposing the closing of the road have now, you know, notified me that they no longer oppose that. So they're now asking that the county consider, you know, the closing of Broken Road and Stillwood Road, not, not closing it, but not opposing them petitioning the court to close it. And last time, it went before the Public Service Committee. And I would recommend that you refer to the Public Service Committee and let them hear from the individuals who want to close it and let them report back to you.
I agree. And I will ask the Public Service Committee to take a look at that and bring us a recommendation.
And the other thing I have is, the last meeting, there was a request to get a status on the Boogaloo Railroad crossing, and we have, I have not been able to get a status. You know, William is the one who was in charge for the county. And we have been trying to get an update. We have a company that's A E C O M. who represents the county.
A E Com. They are the, I think the Charleston group office was on that.
Kenneth Johnson was their engineer who was working with it, but he, he left. And he gave us the name of an Emily Swearengen as the person we need to contact. And we have tried to contact her to get an update, and she has not responded. So we will continue to do that. Because the county's done everything, you know, that they're supposed to do with getting the divided ways and everything out there. So we're waiting on. But I, I think what's going on is that because it, it's been going on for so long, they're, they're having to get additional, you know, information in order to-
You think the information changed, Walter?
Well, I don't think the information's changed, but the cost may have changed and that may have gone up. I'm thinking that the CDC, you know, they have money ready to be used on that project. And they're anxious to know what the status is too.
I think the last time that we had A E Com. and we also had CSX at the table, they said, close two, the whole one out, the Boogaloo. And we closed two, two of the crossings. There was a year lapsed, and they hadn't done anything after we closed those two. And now it's been two more years, and nothing has been done. So we need to, Boogaloo folks in that community, it's been ten plus years along.
It's been longer than that. The first thing I was handled when I became county attorney in two thousand and two was to file on the Boogaloo closing.
That's right.
So it's been over twenty years.
Twenty years, for sure.
I will continue to follow up with her, you know.
Okay.
Because the county's done everything they're supposed to. And supposedly, everything's in order, you know, to start the process on the start, you know, rebuilding of the crossing.
Well, I hope you can report each month until we get this thing.
I will.
Thank you so much. Old Bendis, we're already taking care of the match for the Allenelle County Historical Society. So we move into New Bendis. Hainsworth Sankar Board of Law. Hainsworth Sankar Board Law Firm out of Columbia. Engagement letter for the CB Bank Project. This is standard engagement letter that we can use as they move forward with that project. Need to get a motion?
I move.
Good move, second?
Second.
Moving properly second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Poses? Aye, sir. And this is a request for proposal for the Allenelle County Leisure Center. This is our walking trail in Davidson, Florida. Been selected, no doubt. Need to get a motion? Moving properly second that we accept the proposal from Davidson, Florida for the leisure center walking trail. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Poses? Aye, sir. Lastly, agreement for professional service. And here again, this Davidson, Florida, Allenelle County Leisure Center Walking Trail. Need a proposal, need to get a motion, please.
I move.
And moving properly second that we engage Davidson, Florida for our Office of Agent Walking Trail. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Poses? Aye, sir. We're going to take a five-minute break, and we're going to go into executive session. We have several things to talk about. And I think we probably going to do it right here. So you have to step out, then we will allow you to come back.
Okay, we back in session and there's a letter that we need authorization for Mr. Dowlin, Roy Dowlin who's with the first and main development. This is from Haynesworth Sankor Board, a law firm in Columbia, and we want to authorize Mr. Dowlin to sign this letter. And while we can't have a chance to get it. And Judy has a note saying that Roy Dowlin must sign. So I cannot get a motion from council to approve his signing. The movement properly second that we ask Mr. Dowlin to sign the engagement letter with Haynesworth Sankor Board on the CB Bank project. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Poses by the same time, aye, sir. Council, is there any decision coming out of, any recommendation coming out of executive session?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilwoman Jennings.
I make a motion that we approve the recommendations from Mr. David Efferson for A and B recommendations.
Okay, you've heard the motion, can I get a second?
Second.
The movement properly second that we implement, accept and implement the recommendation coming from Mr. David Efferson on our council formal government. coming from Mr. David Efferson on our council formal government and reorganization and implementation. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Poses by the same time? Aye, aye. Any other motions or recommendation?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the purchase of air conditions for the jail courthouse and brain building.
Got motion?
Second.
Second, that we move forward in the purchasing of air condition for our jail facility, the brain building and the co-gas. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Poses by the same time? Aye, aye. Any other recommendation?
Mr. Chair, we, I make a motion that we approve the bathrooms to be installed at the Martin Park in Martin, South Carolina.
Second. It's been moving properly second, that we accept a bid for the installation of bathroom facility at the Martin Park. Any question? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Poses by the same time? Aye, aye.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion that we instruct Ms. Lewis to, instruct, instruct Ms. Lewis to speak with Mr. All concerning the street signs. And also, I don't know if that should be in one motion, but also the different municipalities, oh, the municipal, different towns to identify the signs that are missing.
The motion, can I get a second? Second. You heard the motion? That we instruct, we ask administrator to get with Mr. All and instruct signs, the municipality that the availability of signage is now ready for installation, they need to get their requests in. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Poses? Aye, aye. Any other recommendation coming out of executive session?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. White?
The motion adjourned.
Second. Okay. The movement properly second, that we adjourn. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Poses?
Aye, aye.